Beast weed teacher spot.
Yes.
Morning, who do we have?
Gary, over to Liam and Tim.
Morning, Gary. Did you have the power all the way back? You're a work lady.
Thrown off.
Yeah, you know.
I got kicked out of my hive.
It's not the first time, let's be honest. Any more bee jokes?
No.
I was gonna say, give us some time.
But I will buzz on up there if you mind. Very nice, very nice.
Okay, good morning, it's 10 a.m., we ask you to please rise if you're able, for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene our commissioners' public meeting. Almighty God, we thank you for this midsummer morning where we can gather and conduct business in the county. We are thankful for our beautiful valley that you created that we call home. And we always appreciate and marvel at your creation. We pray for those who have experienced the recent flooding in our area. We ask your guidance and resources for them as they recover. We thank you for the first responders that helped them through these difficult times. We're thankful there were no injuries or loss nor loss of life. Father, today our hearts are heavy. As we reflect, remember the 21 loved ones marked community lost on Flight 800. We'll never forget 29 years ago on this day, when we lost 16 students and five chaperones. They left their homes with smiles. They kissed their loved ones at noon. They boarded a bus for departure in anticipation of leaving New York in early evening to arrive at their destination in Paris, France. It started as a trip of a lifetime, ended in tragedy and total sadness. There were sons and daughters, brothers and sisters, and mothers and fathers. And all were brilliant and vibrant lives that touched so many in their short span of life. We ask you to continue to comfort their family, their friends, and our community as we remember these precious lives each day and we will never forget these beautiful souls. And we ask you to guide us this morning. May our decisions be in accordance with your will. These things we pray in your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Here is written in the letter of which is famous, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we convene our commissioners' public meeting and we'll ask for approval of any minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make the motion.
All right.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment on agenda items only? Anything else?
Nothing on that.
Okay, moving on, we have a proclamation today. Special machine is gonna read it.
Yes, special, as they said, because I'm the sweetest one, that's why I get to read that. Proclamation of the American Honey Queen. Whereas the beekeeping industry touches the lives of every individual in the nation with honeybees pollinating nearly one-third of the human diet, including a large majority of fruits, nuts, and legumes, providing over $20 billion annually in direct value to the United States agriculture. And whereas, United States honeybees produce over 300 varieties of honey, including Pennsylvania honey such as clover, wildflower, buckwheat, and golden rung. And whereas, the American Beekeeping Federation selected Cheyenne Bastian Brown as like coming count of like coming county as the 2025 American Honey Queen. And whereas Cheyenne previously served as the 2024 Pennsylvania Honey Queen and was selected as the 2025 American Honey Queen based upon her skills in marketing, promoting, public speaking, and writing. And whereas Cheyenne will travel and speak throughout the United States promoting the American beekeeping industry and providing education of the importance of nature's most valuable insect by giving schools, legislative, and community presentations, television, radio, and newspaper interviews, virtual platform presentations, and working at festivals, farmers markets, and fairs, including the Lake Coming County Fair. And whereas Cheyenne has represented Pennsylvania beekeepers and her family, friends, and Lake Coming County with distinction and honor as evidenced by this award. Now therefore, be it resolved, on this 19th day of July 2025, we, the commissioners of Lake Coming County, extend their congratulations to Cheyenne, recognize her outstanding achievements, commend her dedication to the Honeybee Federation, and wish her well as she travels the country promoting the American beekeeping industry and representing Lake Coming County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, signed Lake Coming County Commissioner Scott Almesker Chairman, Mark C. Sortman Vice Chairman, and Mark Missing the Secretary. Obviously, on this day, it's the 17th, even though I guess your special day will be Saturday, then the 19th, because that's what it says on here. So yeah, you can come up, you you can take the pony if you want.
Do I need to press a button?
No.
Okay, so, good morning commissioners and the public, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As said before, my name is Cheyenne Bastion Brown, and I'm honored to serve as the 2025 American Honey Queen. I'm also a proud recent graduate of the Pennsylvania State University, where I earned a Bachelor's of Science in Agricultural and Extension Education. I'm a native to Lake Coming County, being born and raised in the area and growing up alongside the Susquehanna River in Ralston, Pennsylvania. My academic and personal background has given me a strong foundation in agricultural outreach. And I'm passionate about sharing the importance of honeybees, beekeeping, and pollinator health with people of all ages and background. As the American Honey Queen, I represent the American Beekeeping Federation, an organization that has supported and advocated for the U.S. beekeeping industry since 1943. Through this role, I travel nationwide to encourage and engage with communities at fairs, schools, agricultural conferences, and governmental events to raise awareness of how honeybees contribute to our daily lives, our economy, and our future. Honeybees are truly the unsung heroes of agriculture. They are the beginning of our food system, responsible for pollinating more than one-third of the food that we eat, including fruits like apples and blueberries, vegetables like cucumbers and squash, and essential crops like almonds and alfalfa. Without honeybees, these foods will be more scarce, more expensive, and in some cases disappear altogether. In addition to pollination, honeybees contribute to an entire supply chain from honey producers and small family farms to farmers markets and food manufacturers. Their work generates over $20 billion in added value to U.S. agriculture each year, just through pollination. The great honeybee is also responsible for being the very beginning of our food system, as alfalfa and other grain crops are used as livestock feed, leading to various products such as meat and milk needed as proteins throughout the day. Although honeybees are thriving, they still have their challenges. Therefore, there are many ways that people like yourself, as well as many of your constituents, can support honeybees, local pollinators, and beekeepers year round. By planning and supporting pollinator gardens, as well as participating in supporting No Mo May, you are supporting forages for honeybees to consume in the early spring and summer. For the beekeeper, I strongly encourage purchasing from local producers, as well as supporting honeybee policy. Everyone can do their part to support the beekeeping industry in such small ways. Thank you again for allowing me to share this message with you today and for your ongoing support of agriculture and environmental stewardship in Lake Coming County. Together, through awareness and action, we can help ensure that honeybees and the vital role that they play in our food system continue to thrive for generations to come. Thank you.
It's quite an honor to be traveling across the United States. Wonderful. Give me anything you'd like to.
Yeah, I guess my my question, I mean, it's it's first, I I think it's exciting that you're from Renova, Pennsylvania, you are the United States of America as bee queen, which that's just awesome that you come from here. Um, what got you started in in bees and how long have you been involved to get to this recognition?
So I actually don't have bees, I'm not a beekeeper. Um, but my journey started when I was a freshman in high school. I went to Canton Junior Senior High School. I joined something called FFA, uh, which many will most future partners of America that I couldn't no longer speak for anything, it's just called the National FFA Organization. Uh, and my advisor, Mr. Thomas Hachanowski, actually brought in a beekeeper. And he talked to us about colony collapse disorder, which was a a issue, um, quite a few years ago, um, where bees would seriously disappear. And you had no clue where they were going, what was happening, anything of that sort. And I became super interested in it, so I wrote a speech about honeybees. Um, and from there, it was all kind of just made history. I always had a place in my heart for honeybees, went down a couple of different roads. Um, I've been advocating multiple ways since the 2018 Troy Fair theme. Uh, 2020, that's being the FBA seat officer, like, oh, we can't dairy princess, and then eventually I was like, I'm done with all of this, I'm gonna go to college and everything. I'll advocate different ways, and then I met the state coordinator for the Pennsylvania State Beekeeper Promotion Program. And I was like, yeah, I'll do this one last thing, because I just love bees that much. Um, and so it just kept continuing, and I finally got to the point where I was like, I'm not gonna stop there. I might as well run to be the American Honey Queen and have the ability to advocate for something so much bigger than myself. And so I did that, and now here I am. This is a full-time job for me, so I travel full-time.
Oh, wow.
Um, and it's an amazing opportunity to learn more. One day I hope to have my own bees, but they do take a lot of time and a lot of that.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And you said your degree is, it's not agribusiness, it was agri-
Agricultural and educational.
Education, oh, you want to be an ag teacher, it's your goal.
Yep.
That's good, because we have multiple schools in the area with ag programs, and it's it is a when when an ag teacher retires, it's there aren't an overabundance of them. Um, so that's that would be, that's wonderful for our community. Um, no, it's just neat, I mean, we've learned, you said they're thriving, honeybees are thriving, right?
Honeybees do have their own set of challenges. Uh, there is a lot of money being put in research right now to continue to do research on honeybees, as well as things are happening to them. There is a mite called the burrow mite, there's been a lot of speculation about the burrow mite the past couple of years, and how we try to keep the population down. We've seen a large amount of bee losses this spring due to the burrow mite and controlling of the burrow mite. But the American Beekeeping Federation, as well as a lot of states' patients, are aware of those challenges and are trying to put out as much educational materials and information as possible for bee participants to use to fighting this.
So they're not like endangered or anything like?
To my knowledge, no, not currently.
So have you had, I'm sorry, have you had the opportunity to be at the Governor's Island in New York City yet for, uh, with the beekeeping out there? No.
I have not.
So that, do you think maybe that's part of your path at this point, since you're covering the United States?
We're definitely going to see. Um, so far, I've been to quite a few states, so I actually went to Texas, Florida, California, I'll be going to Nebraska, Connecticut, Washington, Indiana, New Jersey, and then I'll also be going to Wisconsin and a couple of other places this coming fall. Um, I've also been doing a lot of promoting in the area, so I'll be going down to Tipton for the Pennsylvania State Beekeeper Association meeting on Saturday. And then I'll also be at the Troy Fair on Wednesday, July twenty third, July 23rd.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, so I'm trying to also advocate locally a little bit more, uh, probably setting out about the state beekeeping association and also still representing the American. There are a lot of amazing beekeepers that have a lot of knowledge that they want to share, and obviously the honeybee does a lot. So finding local opportunities, as well as getting to travel nationally, is a big thing in my life personally, with balancing that.
Is is Governor's Island, is that like beekeeping Mecca?
The whole big, yeah, beekeeping Mecca out in New York City, and it and that's, you know, the interesting thing, you know, is you and I were talking prior to this, is that, you know, honeybees, the the value of a honeybee to the individual is also your community, so if the bee's not from your community, you don't get the same
Right.
nutritional value.
Right. Yes, us allergy people do know that, you know, we like local bees.
Cheyenne, you brought your sister with you?
Yes.
Actually, do sir?
Yeah, this is my little sister, um, named Savannah Bastion Brown. She is also a student right now at Canton Junior Senior High School. She was in the FFA program there for the last few years. She'll be going to the Northern Tier Career Center in the fall to participate in the welding program. And someday she's actually going to be running for the 2025 Troy Fair theme title, so kind of following in my footsteps a little bit.
Great, well, thank you for being here.
And where is, where is in Tioga County, where is the welding program? Where do you go?
So Tuanda.
It's in Tuanda, okay.
Uh, one exciting project, Cheyenne, we have going on in Lake Coming County is we've had a student mentorship approach to conservation district uh, about having some, um, bee equipment set up on the county farm. So they've ordered the equipment through the school district, and they're going to be doing that in a small section of the farm in the near near future. So that'll be neat to see that develop as an educational uh, fan out there at the farm. So, yeah. Educate people about the bees.
I can say.
Yeah, we're we're excited the student brought it to us. Okay, would you like to get a picture with us and get a proclamation? If presented to you.
Here, okay.
Our solicitor usually wears a tiara, so we thought not to bring one today. Ready to hold this?
Excellent, thank you so much, you may rush for the open news, thanks for your mom, we'd like to hear your experience.
Okay, reports, Nikki.
Good morning. Uh, presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through July 23rd, 2025, to be paid in on July 16th, 2025, in the amount of $1,957,806.63. 53% out of the general fund, 1.23% out of ARPA, 3.48% out of other grants, 40.12% out of RMS, 2.18% out of escrow.
Hey, is there a motion to accept the council's bail?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Any questions or comments? And all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Nikki.
Uh, information items, Mike?
From the back of the room. He's trying to get his steps.
That's right.
All right.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning. Look different than my karaoke microphone, sorry. You have the karaoke mic? All right, elected officials, personnel actions for the courts, Judge Carlucci's office, Karen Lindsay, law clerk. Uh, pay grade 12, full-time, $64,760.86 per year at 75 hours per pay period. Anticipated start date, July 28, 2025. Also in the courts, Loretta Jetta Barrigan, court reporter, has pay grade nine, full-time, 22.8378 cents per hour, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September 15th, 2025. In the district attorney's office, Jared Mahoski, special detective in the DUI center, uh, part-time, $25 per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually, anticipated start date, July 29, 2025. And then the sheriff's office, Matthew Hutchinson, administrative specialist, licensed to carry, uh, pay grade four, full-time, 16.7504 cents per hour at 75 hours per pay period, with an anticipated start date, July 28, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time a recess, commissioners' public meeting for salary board. Salary boards is time.
The first item I have is vote to approve the salary board minutes from the June 26, 2025 meeting.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next item I have, um, in the prison, reclassify the clerk four from full-time to part-time as of 7/14/2025. And retitle to part-time personnel assistant. Pay grade five.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Um, also at the prison, reclassify the clerk three to a clerk four, retitle to a full-time personnel assistant. And reclass would be from pay grade four to a pay grade five.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Any questions or comments? And then all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board and we reconvene the commissioners' public meeting for personal actions.
Right, morning again.
Yeah.
Uh, prove the following personal actions as conditional offers of employment. Subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions as outlined in attachment A. That first one at the pre-release center, we can take off. Uh, the second one there, the pre-release center, Laura, uh, Caffis, resident supervisor, union, full-time, $19.20 per hour at 80 hours per pay period. Anticipated start date, August 11, 2025. In the prison, Connor Leard, correctional officer, union, full-time at $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, July 21, 2025. Also in the prison, Christian Lafferty, correctional officer, union, full-time at $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, July 28, 2025. And then in adult probation, Sarah Johns, the pre-trial probation officer supervisor, pay grade 10, full-time, uh, $75,922.013024 cents per year, 80 hours per pay period, effective date, July 6, 2025.
I have a motion to accept the personal actions, the exception, the first one, which has been eliminated, as highlighted by the HR director. Any motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Any questions or comments?
Are these all replacement positions?
Yes.
Including the adult probation one?
The adult probation, uh, we had someone there, and they were on extended medical leave. And then she filled in as the part-time, and then they or as the interim, and then they rehired that one, and she was selected.
Are we getting close on the prison to being full staff, or are we still a year or so?
Getting there. Seems we lose two, maybe gain three or four. Um, I think we're still maybe eight or nine down. So.
Progress.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there.
We're getting there, yeah.
Progress. Just slow.
And, uh, I've heard the ad on the radio, it's an excellent ad for employment for Lake Coming County. Been a good job on that. Hopefully we got some response on that. And, you know, methods that we're trying to do to get people hired in the county, so.
Yep, different, trying different, different methods to get the word out. Um,
Beautiful yard sign.
What's that?
The beautiful yard sign.
That right, we could do that, yeah, we got two yard, two signs out hanging at the prison. Um, once again, you know, it's, uh, our our benefit package is really tough to beat. Uh, even if you look at the state correctional office, uh, and you look at their benefit package, uh, I think ours is a little bit better than than what they have to offer as well, so it's not always necessarily, you know, the tiers of government that you go up, the you think, you know, you go county, you know, state, federal, that you're gonna increase. Um, I would put our health center and our benefits with that alongside the federal at any any time and and say it's it's monetarily better um, than what the government, the federal government offers, so it's just getting the word out and and, uh, educating people that what we have to offer, because it it doesn't have the big red cross outside saying, here's our our clinic. Um, but, uh, the healthcare there is second to none as well, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So we have motion, we have a second all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, moving on to action items, uh, 6.1, Gary?
Morning, Gary.
Morning. Uh, action item 6.1 is vote to approve the subscription with Verizon for the camera and tracking device for the new curbside truck at, uh, $50.50 a month, that is a true budget item. Basically, that's just a dash cam system with GPS that we like to have on some of our on-road trucks that that kind of helps, uh, take reasons and liability reasons, that it's actually proven in the past to help us out, you know, there's an incident on the road where the other driver said one thing, and our driver said another, and we pull footage and boom. That was in the right.
Absolutely. Okay, uh, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. All fair side?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary. I can't believe one driver would say one thing and another driver would say another.
We had an incident.
I don't think that ever happened.
We had an incident one year where there was a, uh, an I-RAE driver that got out and actually damaged one of the side mirrors of one of our vehicles and disputed it, said I didn't do that. And we have him on camera, so he ended up paying the damages for it. Because it was an I-RAE driver that just uh, uh, in a situation where he felt he was in the right, and so, uh, those cameras do come in handy many, any different ways. Yeah, moving on, worst.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, so this is a contract with NPC. Uh, it is for mail ballot services, and this is something that all the counties had to start doing after Act 77, when with the number of mail ballots we had went went much, much higher. Uh, we used to have a couple hundred mail ballots we might send out for an election, but starting after that, we had thousands. Uh, so about 30 days before an election, we have anywhere from three to 10,000 ballots that all have to go out at the same time. These companies have automated equipment that can put these packets together, uh, and get them all out at once. And so NPC has done great work for us the last four years. This agreement would renew it for another four years. And, uh, the reason why they've done such a good job for us is because they've done printing for the federal government for a lot of years before they got into ballots. So they already had the infrastructure, uh, at their site to be able to securely produce and store and transport sensitive materials. And some of the other companies that offer these kinds of mail ballot services are actually out of state, they're in Florida, or they're in New York, and to me, that adds unnecessary complication, because, uh, this company is in Pennsylvania. And we, the arrangement we have with them minimizes the amount of time the ballots are in the mail, because they actually transport right from their facility straight over to the Harrisburg sorting facility, so it goes right in the mail at Harrisburg, one quick trip up to Williamsport to deliver ballots to our area. It's worked very well for four years, and that's why I'm proposing to renew that, uh, for another four.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll say. I'll move side.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, worst.
All right, 6.3 is Leslie.
Leslie. Morning. Okay, I'm happy, Mike is back up in the front.
Morning commissioners, good morning Maya. They were seeking your approval to sign a three-year, um, contract with, um, Malillo. This would give us, um, support on our backend equipment. Um, and the the data center equipment, the backend equipment, and the amount of $78,059.29 per year for the next three years.
Okay, there are motions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you. I do just want to, um, let you know that if we were gonna sign a one-year agreement, it was like $110,000. It was really ridiculous what they're asking for this, so
Thank you.
We tried to lock them in for a longer period for less, a lot less.
Leslie, thank you, because you're very good at negotiating and working with these communities to get the best rate for the counties.
We appreciate that.
First hand, because you did an excellent job.
We try. Sometimes it's tough, but we do try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ken George, 6.4 through 6.6.
Morning, Ken. Morning, Ken.
All right, um, before you, six point four is an agreement with Pipe Piper Pest Control, um, to, um, treat the barn and the farm area. I don't know what I saw.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it. Questions or comments?
Um, is this all new, Ken?
Yes, it is.
Twenty, so we'd never had it out there before?
We have not, no.
What is our reason for adding it?
Um, we cleaned the barn and we have a, um, rat issue. Pretty severe one at this point.
So this one is just for one, is this one year?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Can I make the motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I can. On your side.
Okay, um, six point five, um, is an amendment to the contract with RJ Erdel. And what it does, it just extends the completion date. And that's for the water line to be installed out at the, um, county barn.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it. On your side.
Aye.
Um, six point six is a, um, a purchase from Trane for two water source heat pumps out of Lysoc, um, building that has failed and needs replaced.
And is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it. Any questions or comments?
Uh, will these also then work as we replace?
Yes, they will. Yep, they'll, they'll fit right in with the new systems as we go forward.
All right, thank you. On your side.
Aye.
Ken, before you go, um, give the conservation district a little bit of an update on the farm last night. And, uh, enlighten them that, uh, currently, uh, we're in the process of subdividing the house from the, from the rest of property from, from the farm. And, uh, we're also doing a subdivision so that we can, there's an extra lot on the, on the, uh, side of the helm. Beyond the north side of the home, I believe. To make the bend there, so that way we could sell the house and a lot. Right, so we'd have two properties put back on the tax rolls. Once we subdivide it. Uh, we'd be doing a driveway into the house. Uh, and then tearing down the existing garage there right now. We're processing doing that. And we like to have this all done by early September, so we can have the house on the market September.
That's what we're shooting for, I guess.
Okay. It's the update that I gave last night, so. Anything else the commissioner want to add to that? Yep. So, and then we use proceeds from the, uh, sale of the house and the lot to put back into the farm. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. And six point seven.
Six point seven, Emily?
Morning, Emily.
Okay, six point six point seven, I am looking for approval for ratification of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight Watts MPO Master Planning Open Ended Agreement. Uh, this is to update the fringe and the indirect cost percentages for the federal reporting portion of our agreement with PennDOT. Um, the in, the rate sheet in front of you is from the cost allocation plan from Lycoming, Lycoming County in twenty twenty. Um, there are not any monetary changes within the agreement to PennDOT, it was just, um, bench reporting for the federal government, they have a certain right.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it. All of her side.
Aye.
And Emily's one of our newer employees to planning.
Yes, transportation plan.
Yep, transportation planning, we welcome you. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Does, does this need updated as a fact that we have?
I was just gonna mention that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Does this need updated that we have some employees that have, are no longer here?
This was for the third quarter, this isn't for, so it was January through March.
Okay.
Um, we haven't, we've, um, submitted the fourth quarter yet. So I'm, I do have I'm not sure, talking with Heather, I wasn't sure, she said the newest one's gonna be twenty twenty-three. So I'm not sure how the fourth quarter is gonna go.
Still be the, these, yeah, it was twenty twenty, okay.
Yeah, and the other thing, Emily, we might wanna just look at too, cause I know you're using the cost allocation plan from twenty twenty. Like our twenty twenty-three is done, so we may wanna get that updated, so you get back more reimbursement.
Yeah, we're speaking with Heather, she said it was hoping, hopefully by the end of July.
Okay.
So I'm hoping to get that from her when I do my fourth quarter reporting.
All right.
Thank you. Next, Maya, you have the next.
Yes, the next two, yep. Uh, the first item, six point eight, vote to approve the agreement with Barbara Bolinger. And D, this is for the district attorneys for expert consultation for an upcoming trial. And testimony.
All right, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it. I'll be your side.
Aye.
And last item, six point nine, vote to approve the appointment of following individuals to the River Valley Transit Authority Board. Um, first is Mark Maraski for a period of five years, which is effective July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five through July seventeen, twenty thirty. And also Richard Mirabito, um, for a period of four years, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty-five and July seventeen, twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, so the, um, I voted first.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it. Okay, so that's, uh, motion and a second. Comment. Uh, RVT approached us about expanding their board. And they asked the county for two recommendations, uh, to be on that board. And, uh, graciously, Mark Maraski and the former commissioner, Ricky Arvito, have accepted to serve on that board. And we're excited about that for, and, uh, also have county input on that. So we wanna thank both those gentlemen for stepping forward and volunteering to serve on this board, so. Uh, we have a second, a motion. A sec, a motion and a second. All fair side.
Aye.
I wanna thank everybody who serves on multiple boards throughout the county, takes their time to, uh, really become engaged in one of these boards. Uh, take up a lot of time and value. We wanna have the expertise input that we have from many of those constituents serving, so we appreciate it. Many of them for four-year terms. That we get things dealt about, we wanna thank them.
Okay. Nothing further than, um, moving to commissioner comment.
Um, the only thing I, I wanted to add today and, uh, Commissioner Messer mentioned in his prayer, but it is twenty-nine years, uh, today since Flight uh, eight hundred. It crashed, it took a lot of our friends and family from, from Montorsville. Um, very sad day back then, hard to believe that twenty-nine years has passed. Uh, such a dramatic, uh, experience for our, our community. Uh, enlightening it a little bit, that everybody here knows my father-in-law. It was pretty, pretty cheap. And, uh, thankfully, uh, he wasn't willing to pay for my wife to be on that flight. So. Yeah, you, you gotta look at it and say, God always has a reason behind what he does. I don't know what the reason would be to take the lives that he took with Flight eight hundred. Uh, but I'm thankful for whatever reason he chose to keep my wife here so that someday I could meet her. Have a life together with her, but, but sad that, that so many of her friends, teachers, from that community, they lost that day.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a somber day for, for those of us who are from Montorsville, we knew some, um, even if you didn't know, I, I graduated in nineteen ninety. So none of the kids that were on the, like, they were on, like, middle school when I would have been going through high school. But you had friends who had siblings, you just had people through town, you do chaperones and it's, it's it's, um, even twenty-nine years later, it's, you know, they, they say time heals all wounds, but it, it's, it is a very, it's still, it's a very strange day. Um. There's there, there, if, the only thing I can kind of equate it to, if you've ever been to Pearl Harbor, if you ever had the chance to, it's, it's just a very eerie, somber, quiet place. Um, and, um, it, it's just July seventeenth is a, is a somber, quiet day in Montorsville and it's, uh, it's a day of remembrance, but it's, it's just a day of, um, and it's still, it's still even though it's been twenty-nine years, it's fresh enough for, for the people who, there's so many people that still remember it. And, um, it was just such a, you know, when you, when you're, when your little town's on CNN, it's probably not for something good. And that's, you know, we, we remember, we learned that that day and it was, uh, it, it's just, it's a strange day, a, a lot of people are very happy to wake up on July eighteenth and to have it be passed again, because there's, there's just nothing good about this day in the borough.
Um. Many of the, the families still live in Montorsville, the siblings are now adults and their friends' fards and see their remembrances on Facebook and, and those friends that went to school with them. I recall back when there was a memorial service not too long after, uh, the last funeral service was held. And it was at Memorial Stadium, which is the football stadium there at the high school and packed, obviously. Mayor Giuliani was one of the speakers. And he had talked about meeting with the families in New York and and, uh, being down there along the waters. He said, New York City has no clue and the world doesn't have any clue what impact this has on a small community. For this to happen in New York City, it has to have a magnitude of something like that hitting our population. Five years later, nine eleven happened. Never forget that. They experienced the same kind of horror that we experienced in this county. And, uh, that was a somber day too, that day, and, and that was a beautiful service. Don't ever get Mayor Giuliani's words. But we'll never forget. And we'll always remember these beautiful souls who'll be there for their friends and families when they want to talk. And anything else?
Okay, we have a public comment.
A public comment?
In the online, or in the audience, we have one. Mr. Stell, good morning.
Back in, um, nineteen sixty-two, Richard Nixon said, you don't have Nixon to kick around anymore because this was my last press conference. And while I don't think I've been kicked around too much, but I have been made fun of, uh, I probably deserved it. But sadly, I am announcing publicly that this will be my last commissioner's meeting I will be attending as a Web Weekly, um, columnist. Few days ago, I told Jim Webb and my editor, uh, Steph Natalo that I have been greatly enjoyed writing for Web Weekly these, these past years and, and I was especially even looking forward to twenty twenty-six, because this was gonna be two hundred and fifty years of, of, um, anniversary of our nation and I was, I already articles on my head. But with my ongoing health issues, um, I have three doctor appointments the next nine days. And it's, um, and then my wife recently had an operation that was quite scary. And her sister, who we've been caring for, for the last five years, uh, is now in hospice, so uh, unlike Superman, I can't write the Daily Planet and still save the day, life has just got too busy for me. And, um, so after twelve years and six hundred and eighty-eight articles, which is fifty-seven a year, which with fifty-two, you're trying to figure out how that works, but, uh, I've written a lot. I'm hanging up my computer. And I just wanted to publicly thank the three of you uh, and all the commissioners in the past that, uh, you've been very open and helping, helpful to me through these years. And, and this also goes for the department heads, uh, you got a great group here with Forrest Lehman, who was in here, and Chuck Kiesling, and Mike McMun, and all of them. I mean, they, they've, they've always been open to me, they've always helped me. Uh, and, and I have so many wonderful memories and I just, I have to give one back. When we were across the street there, there was this guy that, uh, was a deputy director of, uh, what was that, that you were? Uh, the area, yeah, yes, and you sat next to me. And, uh, you said to me, you know, Larry, I'm gonna be one of those guys up there. And, uh, and I thought to my, and I, I think I even looked at him, I said, I think you will. Um. It's, it's been, um, it's really been a blessing to, to be able to be, um, to be able to sit back and recognize that, uh, Lycoming County really has a lot to be thankful for. And I was very blessed to be able to be able to tell all about it. And, um, so I wanna thank you for all your assistance, cooperation. And, uh, I wish all of you the very best in the coming years. But thank you.
Larry, we wanna thank you for, uh, your eloc, writing over the years. I always enjoy reading your articles and, uh, just have you're an artist, you're an artist of words. And you have a great way of putting things, putting things in different perspective and and, uh, we appreciate your ratings over the years, we appreciate you as a human being and what you've done in the county with the fire company and and, uh, the different committees you've been on, time, uh, you volunteered. I'll keep you in our thoughts and prayers for your health and your wife's health. And, uh, we wish you the best, uh. You mentioned Mike McMon, he's getting ready to retire also, announced his retirement. So he'll be here next week. Commissioner's meeting will recognize him and his retirement. Uh, but we wish you the, all the best and you're a dear friend and we're gonna miss you, but we'll stay in touch and, uh, look forward to those side conversations. Thank you.
Yeah, always, uh, always enjoy your articles as well, always enjoyed our conversations at the back of the room prior to the meeting. Uh, but what one compliment that I have to give you is, is all your articles took the high road. Um, at, at a time where we, we seem to always wanna report the bad or, or turn the good story into bad somehow. You always took the bad story and turned it good somehow, so I, I appreciate that as, as you used our names in those stories, but I appreciate that, uh, uh, as a reporter, as a writer, that you always took the high road, uh, and, and made it a value to reach your, your articles, so I, I thank you for that. I hope you have, uh, I hope your health improves if it's, if it's, if you had some current issues, uh, and, and your wife as well. There's a time where you gotta say, it's time to go and, uh, I hope you enjoy the retirement, thank you.
I'm, uh, like, I've enjoyed getting to know you, I didn't know you until this whole process started and, uh, Larry's a very smart guy. Um, we've, you know, shared writings, we each write and, uh, uh, he's done some stuff in leadership and I remember he said, I, I have a book and I have a video series and I said, well, I'll watch the video series, cause that's easier to read. Then, um, um, but no, I've, I've, I've always enjoyed talking to you, this isn't, this is not good news for me, cause I've always, uh, enjoyed just the, the, whether it's short banter or whether it's, uh, extended conversations that we've had. Um. I know, like, when I went to the fair last week and I, you know, you were working and I, I was there with my mom. And I said, hey, there's a guy I, I wanna stop and see, and she said, where is he? I said, he's actually, he's working the Republican table. And she said, you have to go to the Republican table, I said, well, that's where Larry's working, I really like him, and we stopped by and you weren't there. We saw your wife and I said, we'll stop back, so we went around and we ate and then we went back and, um, and it, we, I don't know if, if it's the, the irony or the, the symbolism of the, um, you know, I, I respect your intelligence greatly and, and even though from that aspect, we're on, on different sides of the aisle, I will always consider you a friend and and, um, you have been a blessing for, for the readers and for the county. And, um, and all those fortunate people from outside of Lycoming County that get to read about Lycoming County in Web Weekly, cause I know it spreads a little further and wider, so I am, I am very sorry to hear that this is your last day. And, um, you will truly, truly be missed and, um, we will stay in touch, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, is there anybody else for the audience? Yes, can you come up, please? State your name for the record, please. Thank you for being here this morning.
My name is Susan O'Brien and I live in Montorsville, ten oh fourth Tool Street. And I've come here to learn about Lycoming County. So thank you very much. Uh, I'm learning a lot. So thank you very much, uh, I'm learning a lot. But I think the protocol for letting you know that. You're sitting in front of the wrong name should be changed so that it doesn't happen at the end of the meeting that you're told. Because. Now I'm confused, I know who Commissioner Messina is. But Commissioner Shortman is down as Mister Kenyon. And if somebody, you all know that, but some of us don't. So, thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you for pointing out, I pointed that out. Yeah.
And the next time, just come up here and smack one of us.
Yeah.
If you're gonna start smacking, start at that end. Work your way this way.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And I apologize that you know Commissioner Messina. Is there anybody else? Hey Larry, you wanna, you have any articles left, you can. Do the name switch on that one, your last article.
That would be good.
Okay, well, we've completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned. Till Thursday, July twenty fourth, twenty five, twenty twenty five in the speaker, thank you.